And welcome to Vermillion Board of Education's meeting on February first, February eleventh, excuse me, two thousand and thirteen. Please call the roll.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Habermann? Please excuse this evening, and Mr. Jordan?
Here.
Okay, I'd like to have some of our guests this evening come on up. Introduce themselves, come on up guys. We have some people with some great needs in them, earn the honor of being Citizen of the Month. And these ladies and gentlemen will actually come on up, say their name, who wants to go first? All right, we have your papers, Susan Varon, now here we go. I need a volunteer, one volunteer, all right, come on, come on up. Okay, so remember you're gonna say your name, who your teacher is. So what's your name?
Megan.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Franklin.
And what grade are you in?
First.
Okay, so what would you like to do when you grow up?
Be an artist.
Be an artist, well thank you very much, good job. What's your name?
Carter.
And what grade are you in?
First.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Schultz.
And what would you like to do when you grow up?
Be a mad scientist.
She's kinda quiet, so we're gonna have to get her to really come out loud, go ahead, what's your name?
Danielle.
Oh wow, all right, what grade are you in?
Second.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Menisch.
Okay, and what would you like to do when you grow up?
I don't know.
It's okay, I still don't know yet either. What's your name?
Kristen.
Okay, and what grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Olivia.
And what would you like to do when you grow up? Think about it? Not sure? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so what's your name?
Courtney.
And what grade are you in Courtney?
First.
And so what do you wanna do? Well, who's your teacher?
Ms. Lux.
And what do you wanna do when you grow up?
All right, here we go. So what's your name?
Madison.
All right, what grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Hayne.
And what would you like to do when you grow up?
Uh-uh.
All right, here we go. So what's your name?
Madison.
All right, what grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Hayne.
And what would you like to do when you grow up?
Um, I forgot.
All right, please join us as they read us. Come on guys. Ready? Let's go, flags are flying, start us out.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, congratulations. What's that? I said Citizen of the Month. What'd they do, did they do something good or did they do? Well, congratulations to our Citizens of the Month, they did a great job of leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Obviously, they are some of the leaders in our grades, and their teachers found that they were doing some pretty wonderful things to be selected as that. So I wanna thank them all for coming tonight and congratulate them for their leadership in our schools. Moving on to item number four, our student liaison update with Mrs. Ennis, would you please?
Yes, this evening we have some innovative students here with us. We have Lisa Murray and Paula Berskin from Saylor Way, and they're students who were involved in the LEGO Robotics Program. This fall, we decided at Saylor Way Middle School that we were going to start a robotics club. Every time I hook into the projector, it's throwing the whole thing off.
Here comes IT.
All right, so we decided to start and form a club over at Saylor Way, and we wanted to go into the first LEGO League competition that was held at LCC, the Spitzer Center. So we decided in September that we're gonna form this club, it was for grades four through seven, we were gonna meet two days a week after school for an hour, and these are two members of our team, Andrew and Jasmine, who kinda took on a leadership role as we started going through this. We ended up starting with only nine students, we had to cut off at twenty students because each week we would show up and more and more students were there. We were only allowed to take ten students however to the competition because that's the league rules. So based on how often they came and their contribution to the group is how students were chosen to go ahead and participate. So this is an example of the students there at LCC, and I'm gonna let them talk to you about their day.
This? This is the parade that we did before the LEGO competitions. They would dismiss members and teams of the LEGO Robotics, one by one, and they would tell what town they were from, and how many members, and their names.
So the students had to design everything, they were looking at how well the students were working together as a group to do this, so you can tell they created the banner. So when we'd meet in the evenings, the groups, the students would break up into different groups to do each of the challenges.
Our first course with our team was the core values, we had to work as a team, the judges gave us a problem, and we listened to each other's ideas and came up with a solution to it. And this is us watching our play for the project.
So what happens once they go in the group, the students don't have any idea what they're gonna be presented with, so as they walk in, they give them a challenge, and their challenge was if somebody couldn't reach behind the couch, and was it a telephone that fell behind it, they had to come up with something that could help that person get the item from behind the couch. And then they watch how they all listen to each other, and if they're all participating, and what their solution is to the problem. So other than us coming and working together, there's not a whole lot we could do to prepare for that, 'cause you're not really sure what you're gonna get when you get in there. Our second challenge is a project, and Andrew's gonna tell you a little bit about it.
Our project was to come up of an idea to help people get over our, the problem that we were told, and our problem was heel spurs, so we made, we made ideas to help to get over heel spurs, like exercising, eating healthy, and changing your shoes every six months, and that was our project to help the senior.
So the person would have to come in, we had somebody's grandmother come in, and she talked to our team, and they had to research from there. So once they complete their project, they have to find a creative way to present it to the judges.
We made a play for heel spurs to help the, our judges understand what we were trying to, to help them with, the people with heel spurs do, and we put on a play to help them understand.
Do you wanna tell them what your part was?
My part was to play the grandmother.
She was the first one to volunteer for grandmother, are you sure? But he was real good about it. The third part, and this is all takes place during the morning time, and the challenges are actually closed to the public, so we were more anxious to see what it was gonna look like. So the third challenge is robot design.
Our robot, Zotron, has a hand that extends, so the pieces could be stayed in place, and a claw to help the pieces not get out of range of the robot. And our robot has three motors, that it was, that's all the motors it's supposed to have, and four wheels.
So this was a real challenge for our students, most of my students out of the group of ten, five of them were fourth graders, one was a fifth grade, so I had two sixth grades and two seventh grade students. So for the most part, starting in September, we had students who were learning how to program, how to build a robot, and then to go actually through the competition and do all this stuff, in just a matter of a few short months. So it was quite amazing. Here's an example of the robot game.
Our objective for the robotic game was to do the smaller parts first, like the flag where our robot had to lift its arm and it would go up, and the blue quilts where it would have its arm go down with the, kind of like a snowmobile kind of thing, and then it would drag the quilt pieces to the quilt, and then it would lift up and back up and go back to base. And then we also had the chair where you bring it back to base, and the claw, it would go out to the chair and grab it, and then come in back, and then you would have to fix it. And the bigger ones we didn't have time to do, 'cause we got our kit a little late, so...
And when we were reading it, because there was so much to it, everything said to focus on three challenges and get those under your belt first before you go on. So we were very surprised having such a young team and competing for the first time. After the first round, we were in fifth place.
How many teams?
Yeah, and that was pretty good, we didn't end up the day there, we ended up in eleventh place overall, but we changed our tactics, and we wanted to make sure that the students that were there had a chance to go up and compete. So we let them go and try their projects or their challenge, even though we weren't sure if it would succeed. We were lucky enough that you were given three tries, and you had two minutes to complete as many tries as you could, and the highest score is the one that they took, so they didn't average them, so we were able to let everybody have some experience at the board. There's an example, and it's not a really clear picture here, but of the board, and you can see, this is at Spitzer Center, there is an audience behind, and Jasmine and another student are up front. What happens is there's two kids allowed at the table at the same time, they can perform one challenge, and then they tag off to the next group who go up and do it. Because we were kind of over in a corner, they did have a projector and a digital camera that was down, and they projected it so that people could see it out in the audience what was happening.
Our team had to wait behind a yellow line, and then when one team member from the table passed the line, they were allowed to tap the other person to get in, but they had to be behind the line, they couldn't be on it, or we lost points. I don't remember how many, but I think it was around one.
Yeah, so they had to wait, and you can see the line on the back, and they had to wait for all of the judging to finish, so before we could leave, they would bring everybody up to the table and let them know how they scored and what they could do next time to improve their score. It was a long day, in the middle of December, right?
At the end, we were given medals, and they announced our names on a speaker, and we were to get, and we had our pictures taken, and then when all of that was done, we sat down and watched the other teams go up and get their medals and trophies.
So we learned a lot about the day and how to go and actually be in the competition. We also have students now who are in fourth grade who have four years that they can go back and keep trying the challenge, and that's what we saw, the winners, I'm happy to say, went on to Cincinnati, to the big regional one, and it was one of the groups from ours who scored in the top five. So it was a really good experience overall for us, I was really proud to work with the kids, especially when we were sitting in the core values, and they had to show how they were working as a team. We really thought we had that one, and we just missed it by, I think it was one point when I looked at the scores, so we were really close and working very well as a team. Anything else you'd like to include? About the day? You want to?
If I could do this all over, I would like to do it, even if we didn't win, I had a lot of fun.
They're waiting, they're waiting for us to start robotics club back up, so that's...
Question? From anybody?
Great.
So I have one question, and if, if you could do one thing over again with what you created, what would you do?
I would try to...
Swaps the mic.
I would try to do chair, because we didn't get to put it back to the table, and we just got to bring it to base and build it, that was all.
Because if you, once you took the chair to base, if you took it back out and missed putting it under the table, you lost more points than you would've gained if you put it under, so...
So you learned something from it.
Yes. You wanna talk about what you would take?
Yeah, I would probably change, try to get the arm to balance, 'cause it was a little sideways when we were doing it, so we had to work with the weight, and also I would do more programming on different stuff.
So you would expect it to be a little harder?
Yeah, it will tip a little on the side, 'cause there's not any weight on this, but we were only allowed to have three motors on, so that was kinda hard, and this is the one spot where it would really go. We tried it on the back, but it would've been too tall for the competition.
Did you have specifications so you could build that ahead of time, or did you build that the day of? We had specifications to do it. Okay. I thought they did a really good job, considering, I mean, we put together everything, it was just a matter of time.
You guys will be back next year hopefully, so let's improve.
Yeah, they just announced the new one, it's Nature's Fury, this one was Senior Solutions, which when you're working with really young kids, it was kind of hard for them to understand Senior Solutions, but Nature's Fury is something I think that we'll really get into. Thank you.
Congratulations. Nice job. Anything else, Mrs. Ennis? Well, I know this isn't home economics or shop class, but we're heading in the right direction, so, meant that for someone in our audience. We're trying, so, fantastic, good job. Okay, let's move on to item number five, the legislative update, Mr. Habermann's not here tonight, and Mr. Jordan is going to take part in his place. Are you guys hearing us okay out there, by the way? All right, good.
Thank you. I did refer to last week's Ohio School Board Association Communications, and wanted this on the agenda, just because it's big news. Governor Kasich has put out his budget proposal, which has a strong emphasis on school funding plan, and we were all emailed this information, this just happened last week, and for the first time ever in the last week or so, the Ohio House is now online live streaming the Finance and Appropriation Committee meetings, and they're not only live, but then they're archived, so you can go there, and I would recommend that we may put a link on our website so that people can do that. This coming Wednesday, or last Wednesday, they, they released the breakdowns of this funding proposal per school district, and I think we're gonna turn to Mrs. Hendricks to kinda give a summary of the treasurer's expertise on that, but I also wanted to comment that there are further committee meetings this week on this major topic, and tomorrow morning at ten AM is the committee's meeting on tax reform, and Wednesday it will be strictly, nine AM, the committee meeting is on, strictly on education provisions. And now I'm gonna turn to Mrs. Hendricks, 'cause she'll summarize what that spreadsheet that came for Vermillion Schools and what it said.
In the initial proposal of the governor's budget for the next two years, Vermillion's funding is set to remain flat, we are under what's called a guarantee, which is something that many school districts in Ohio are on, we have declining enrollment, so therefore we're guaranteed to get at least the level of funding we had in the prior year. We've been in that situation for a number of years now, they are talking about that guarantee, whether that will continue or whether it won't, for us, that's about half a million dollars a year in revenue, and so we, that's a bit unclear yet, but also there are some competitive or categorical types of incentives that are in that preliminary funding proposal, and we really don't have enough information to determine how those could impact Vermillion yet.
I think I saw an email later today that said the numbers on transportation were out, but that was like a late in the day email, today.
Correct, that was, that was the difference between our current level of funding.
I saw that after we spoke.
Yep.
That's just important news on that, and we haven't really made a determination, is it really truly satisfying the Supreme Court decision of, of school funding? And obviously, that's the hot debate over the next four months. We'll wait and see.
Not a lot changed at this point.
At this point now.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much for filling in for Chris, I'm sure you'll appreciate it. Any other questions on that? Okay, moving on to items six, discussion items. Do you wanna...
Sure, I'll introduce our principal, Heidi Riddle, and our curriculum director, Jim Belata, they're going to come up and do a presentation on some of the changes that we're looking at as options for the high school, so thank you for coming out tonight and giving us some information.
Heidi's setting up, I wanna just talk a little bit about Lorraine County Community College, we've met with them a few times to discuss the PSEO dual enrollment. I think you are aware that the funding is changing for the positive for us with our dual enrollment courses, where students can earn college as well as their high school credits, and we're adding credits as we're moving forward. The funding has changed where it will cost one thousand dollars per course that our teachers teach at our high school, that are also the college bound courses. What that means is the funding formula before was very complicated, where we would share funding, like if it's five thousand whatever per student, part of that money would go to LCCC, and part would go to us. Now, we're going to keep all the money except for a thousand dollars per course, so it could be twenty kids, it could be ten kids, it doesn't matter, it's still a thousand dollars per course, for the courses that our teachers are teaching. So we have a number of those courses that we've had, music appreciation, honors English III, pre-calculus, civilization I and II, US history I and II, and Spanish IV, now those are going to continue.
So what's the potential revenue for our school district if, with this change?
I talked to Amy briefly about that, and do you remember what the figure was that we were paying before?
Before, it would be the prorated share of the state aid for the time that that student was being served in a PSEO class, considering that we were getting about sixteen hundred dollars a student, it was maybe a couple hundred dollars per class for student.
So, does that answer you? Okay. We've also added some courses that our teachers will be teaching, general biology, introduction to ecology, music as a world phenomenon are also added. We're looking at another option that we're going to try out this coming year, where the college professor and one of our teachers will be team teaching a course. Those courses are a little more expensive, they're double, they're two thousand dollars because the LCC professor's really creating the course and having it online, but our teacher is certified in that area, but they might not have, well they will not have like a master's degree in that area, so they're familiar with the coursework, but they're not actually considered a professor yet for that course. And so we've added sociology, psychology...
How would that work, just as far as instruction goes? How do you see that working, I guess?
I see the, it being online, but also a blended approach, where our teacher will be there to teach the actual coursework as well.
Okay.
Now Chinese is gonna be different, we're the only school district trying this, they were looking for a school district to try Chinese, where there's going to be a Chinese teacher at the college, and they're actually from China, and our teacher will be, hopefully we're, we're looking at one of our language teachers to teach that, that she won't speak Chinese, but knowing a language, like French for instance, would help them teach another foreign language. But that will be totally online, except for two days a week, there will be distance learning taking place where the person, the professor for Chinese will be at LCC's projecting to our classroom here in the district, and the kids and the teacher will be working together back and forth. This is a pilot that we're trying this year to see how it works. We don't, we wanted to add Chinese, but again, the key to me for any course, of course, is the... We wanted to add Chinese, but again, the key to me for any course, of course, is the teacher. That's the key. If you don't have a good teacher, kids are not going to learn the course. So, we're hoping this works, and if it does, we can add more courses for the following year, which will be 2014-15, because we have many teachers that would love to be part of this, but they might not have the master's degree in that subject area. But there is a way where we can work together with LCC, and they're willing to try it as well. So, really, we're adding courses. The kids could have almost completely the two years of their college work completed. I'm sure you're aware of LCC's work with other colleges, where the kids could get three years of their college completed, paying the fees that LCC charges, and not Ashlyn or Akron University or other universities, which are more expensive. So, the last year, they would have to pay the fees for Akron or whatever college it is that they're working with, with the dual enrollment. But the first three years, they'll pay a lower fee. I think that's a tremendous.
So, is there a fee right now if you take a PSEO class?
No. Only if you're on campus. If you're on campus, there is, but not if you're here.
So, those letters that went out were a mistake?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I double-checked on that. There's no fees.
Okay.
Now, we've talked about, the one thing I didn't say that we need to think about, the books that are purchased, we would have to pay for as well. So, Amy and I have talked about the possibility of bringing that to you to say, well, maybe we should have the kids pay for the books, because they're still getting a deal by not having to pay for the courses, and the books are an added expense for us. So, I don't know where we're going to go with that. I guess that's going to be your decision that we'll have to talk about later.
Are all the online classes, they're all accredited, fully recognized?
Yes. The online, this is something separate that we are going to talk about, the online courses as well. But these courses are all blended, and they're actually written by teachers, either our teachers or the LC teachers.
Okay. So, you mentioned summer school. Can kids take these types of courses in the summer at LCC, or?
No. Most of these are year-long courses. Some are semester, but most are year-long. They wouldn't have enough time in the summer. But these are the new courses that we're offering, and we're hoping with the Chinese to get at least 10 students. In order to run it, we need at least 10 with the Chinese courses. The other courses, I think, we'll be okay with. I think we'll have enough students.
The list right there is in addition to what has been.
Correct.
Right. We already have, like I said, we have Music Appreciation, Honors English, Precalculus, Civilization, U.S. History, and Spanish. Those are not included because those are courses that we've had in the past.
Is Chinese one, is that a semester or is that a full year?
Semester.
It's a semester. It's a tough course, and they admit it's very tough for kids to do that.
It's so tough that you get four semester hours instead of the normal three like the other courses. They said it takes a student of high caliber. It's not, it's very, very difficult.
So, if I took Chinese one and two, does that meet my prerequisite for college? I think you mean.
Yes, you have eight, plus you would have eight college credits for a foreign language.
And they said, when they spoke to us, they said it's in the global world of today, that would look great on your resume coming out of high school.
That's a great opportunity. So, if your kids are interested in giving it a try, you know, they would have to drop if they have Spanish, or I guess they would have Spanish. They would could learn another language. I mean, I think it's a great opportunity for our kids.
We'd always heard in the past, we tried Mandarin five years ago, whatever it was. And I think the feedback we got then was it was more of a cultural language, and they recommended if we were really serious, we needed to start kindergarten, first, second grade because of the culture part of it. And he pushed back from.
I'd say what the professor at LCC said, that it's just really a difficult language. And he recommended starting in the elementary grades with Spanish and making that more of your push for the elementaries up. He didn't know whether they'd be prepared, because you'd have to keep working at Chinese and working at Chinese. And the time involved, we don't know if we'd be able to offer that all the way through.
Gotcha. Okay.
And then in our business technology, we're adding four new courses, and it's computer programming, where they'll be learning the ins and outs of computers. And our gaming development course will use Unity 3D, where they'll be able to develop gaming, actual games. And that will, and that totally ties into our robotics group that was here, so we can just keep, we can keep adding on to their learning. 3D models and animation, where they can learn to make cartoons, different cartoons, movies, and games. And sports entertainment and marketing will be taught by Ms. Aluska, who will be teaching the marketing aspect of sports.
These are all face-to-face.
Face-to-face.
Traditional courses.
The gaming development, does that involve the beginning of programming? And the need or the necessity to have a math background, or what's going to be the prerequisite, anything?
None, none, no prerequisite. Well, they have to say computer programming first. It's not, that, gaming is not open to freshmen.
What about app development for iPad, iPhone, you know?
We talked about.
We did talk about that.
Possibility, but.
It's generating revenues for certain schools.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, you get your app that's made for the, you know, kindergarten or whatever, and it gets published, and you sell it for a buck a piece.
We did talk about that. We thought, let's go with this first and see where, how many people sign up for it. And if the interest is there, we'll certainly think about that.
How many apps are out there right now?
I don't even know.
Millions.
I don't know how many lots.
Yeah, so. But I think it's a real life. It's something we really should take a good, close look at, you know, in the future. I mean, obviously, we're heading in the right direction, but I'd like to see something in that area.
And then in social studies, contemporary history, contemporary history from, American history from the 1960s on, military history, you'd be studying key wars and battles and current events around Vermillion, Ohio even, around Ohio and the United States.
Are those face-to-face classes?
Sorry?
Face-to-face?
Face-to-face. All of these are face-to-face. At the end is the online electives.
Okay.
Science electives are forensic science investigation, where they explore the application of criminal investigations. And they have real-life scenes that they have to explore and figure out who did it. So, this will bring a lot of interest in our science area. These are two, this is each a semester course. Mathematics, Integrated Math II and Algebra II Parts I and II. We have found that many of our Algebra II students aren't ready to go on to Precalculus, so they need a little more time and a little double-dosing. So, we're offering Algebra II Parts I and II, and we do have Integrated Math I currently. And that will take, that will give them a little more information, just a little more double-dosing that they need. And English electives, oral communication, which would be public speaking, creative writing, where they'd be writing different genres of nonfiction, fiction, fantasy, and so forth. Theater I, where they'll learn to put on a live production. The novel, where they'll study different novels and different areas and different genres. And the graphic novel, don't worry, it's clean. It's just about Marvel comic books and so forth, so I don't want to alarm you. And it's not violent. So, the graphic novel, and that will generate some interest as well. And special education, it looks better on my computer than on there, but Job Skills 101, where our special education students will be given some job readiness skills before they, so they're prepared for leaving high school, whether it be interviews, resumes, different job skills that they need developed in that area. And John?
Again, our focus is career, college career readiness, and you'll see everything ties back to that. Now, with all these courses, we're not sure which are going to be the most popular. We can't offer all of these courses. If we have like five, six kids sign up for a course, we're not going to be able to offer it because it's too expensive. We can't afford to have a teacher with six kids. So, we don't know what the cutoff is going to be. We're hoping to have 20 or more in a class. But some of the PSEO dual enrollment classes might not have 20, so we have to go back and forth and see how much is this going to cost? And how are we going to be able to do everything that we want to do?
So, when they schedule, you're going to have, hey, here's my option number one, my option number two, and option number three?
Right.
Okay. So, you can automatically bump them to option two if one doesn't.
Yeah, or we'll converse with them and say, you know what, you didn't get this course, but here are some other ones you could think about doing.
Are you going to give preference to upperclassmen?
Yes.
For option one? Okay.
Yes. Okay, now, we have also online electives, because we wanted to offer something for kids instead of going to a study hall. So, we offered a lot of face-to-face electives that we've added, as you've seen. We also will have some online choices. What we did, or what Lisa Murray did is she created a survey for kids, and I think there were, how many, 20? 20 different online offerings we can get through e-Dynamic Learning, which is a curriculum provider. And we asked them, of these courses, which would you be most likely to take online? And these are the 11 that came up that they would like to try. So, we had our teachers, for the most part, most of these courses, we had our teachers look at these courses. And I can't remember the names of the teachers. Heidi would know more, but can you just give an example? Like Criminology, who checked that one?
Criminology, Christine Reynolds, and Law and Order was Matt Pizzano. And Mythology and Folklore was Pat Graves, and she said she would love to take that course. It's great. It goes into depth and really, really dovetails what they learn as their junior year.
So, these are all going to be online. Kids would be assigned these courses if they would, you know, of course, if they want to take them. They're all electives. They'll be assigned to a classroom. There will be a teacher assigned to the classroom to keep them motivated and make sure that they're paying attention to their coursework and keeping up with their coursework, and they'll grade the courses and so on. These courses are, again, all electives. They're all online. They do not have to have a certified, like for Criminology, you don't have to have your certification in social studies to be able to teach that course.
So, they're all, my original question before, so these would all be accredited, recognized by colleges, recognized by the NCA and all that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, right now, we're waiting to see, well, once the kids are scheduling, to see which of these we're going to actually have. Now, these are pretty good. We could offer all of them, even if like one or two kids took one of these courses. As long as the teacher could read the syllabus and could follow along, they could teach that course. It doesn't take, again, someone like the core courses, you have to have a certified and highly qualified teacher, but not for these courses.
So, you could have multiple classes going on, or courses going on in the same classroom?
We visited North Canton, and they have one teacher with multiple classes going on, but they're all online. The teacher would have to keep track of where every child is and make sure that they're completing their lessons and not just, you know, sloughing it off and not doing anything.
Do they have a feel for how many courses? You know, because we've got to, you know, the way our contract's up with the teachers' union, we can only have so many people in a class. So, would this be a different way of thinking potentially? Because, you know, I'm just, it just, as we're looking at these things and talking to the teachers, you know, could it be 30 people in this class that are really all online, but they're for certain things, or?
We don't see 30.
I'm just throwing it out there, though. I mean, whatever that threshold is based upon what North Canton is saying.
You weren't at that school.
No, I didn't.
You remember, Phil, how many, there must have been 20 or more in a class, and one teacher.
How many subjects would you see in that class?
At the time we visited, and that was just a snapshot of one day, there weren't any more than 25, I would say. And I would say that there was at least five or six different subjects going on at the time we visited, but we were only in there for one period, and so it was difficult to tell if that was a normal day. They said that it was, but.
Well, this is encouraging, so it'd be nice to research what the potential is for this, because if we have a lot of students that want to take additional online courses, you know, the fact that you can have one teacher helping with, you know, multiple subjects is a very affordable way to do this.
As you know, in the college these days, it's mandatory that you're taking, in most colleges, at least one online class in addition to the face-to-face classes that you take. So, we believe that this is a stepping stone for us as well.
Now, do these work at your own pace?
Well, there's so many lessons per course, and it is work at your own pace, but you would have to know, like, there's, there might be 36 lessons and you need to complete so many in a nine-week period to keep on track.
So, I mean, I'm just trying to think, so if you went home and worked all weekend, could you almost, you could work pretty far ahead?
Finish early, sure.
So, you could double up, if you're a pretty good student, take multiple courses. Would we allow that?
Yeah.
So, these do not have to be done onsite in that room with that teacher? It's just if you need help, that teacher is there, but otherwise?
Well, they are. We are going to assign them to a room with a teacher.
So, they have to show up at a?
Right, right.
Every day? It's different than, okay.
We've tried it the other way, and most kids are not going to do it. They just, I don't know if it's not motivated, it's not interesting, no one's keeping track of them, or they're immature. It's probably all those things, and they just can't do it on their own.
People are naturally procrastinators. That's the problem.
Right. So, we find the blended learning works best.
With a teacher to monitor and be sure they're getting their classes completed. Because right now, we do have some online learners at school, and you definitely have to watch, because they will do something different than what they're supposed to be doing.
And before you know it, the quarter's over, and they haven't done anything. So, even here at the workforce development here, they have to be watched. You have to keep on them. You have to, just like any good teacher. I think teachers are always going to be needed.
Feedback.
I don't think that online is going to take over. I really don't. I don't see it happening.
So, as long as there's some kind of measurable, so somebody can.
Yes. So, they can know, I have to get this much work done, yeah.
Good, okay.
Any questions? That's about all we.
That's great. This is good stuff.
The course guide was sent to you, and it's also online, so if you want to read more about the different courses that we talked about, go to the course guide.
We did want to talk about the junior/senior sign-out. I don't know if that's a separate item.
No, it included in this, so if you could talk about it now, we'd appreciate it.
We revamped that somewhat. I think you'll be happy with the changes. The one change is that students have to have at least a C in a course in order to have that privilege of junior/senior sign-out. Heidi had some figures. We've been doing so much, I can't remember if we sent those to you or not, with how many students? Okay. There's only, because we looked at the numbers to see how many kids are coming in late, when are they leaving, and so on. I think there were two students coming in second period.
And those students usually, those two students come in first period anyway and spend their time in study hall or with other classes with teachers.
Some of the kids leave, I think it was 37 leave during lunchtime, and then they come back.
Only during lunch, right.
And that, but the majority leave the last two periods of the day. No one's leaving second, third, fourth, because that's when their core courses are being taught.
The only people that leave fourth are those people leaving to go to LCC.
What else was the change? The major change is the grades that they have to keep up.
Do we need to, I mean, I'm not a fan of signing out at all. I mean, I guess if the seniors sign out the last period, Terry started that tradition. We're going to blame him for it. But the juniors signing out, I've just never been a fan of that. I think we've got a lot of these options up here now that, you know, I'd really, me personally, I'd look at not having seniors sign out at all. There's a reason they do it in high school or in college, because they're more responsive, they're older, but you know. There are some kids, though, Dale, currently that are, do you have jobs, that are, you know, career-minded, so. I mean, I know for a fact it's happening. I know you. I mean, I know for a fact it's happening, I know you've received complaints about, you know, not being able to get out early enough to meet these jobs, so there's kind of two ways to that, that's the unfortunate part, so.
I mean, if they've got a job, that's one thing, I mean, but what is the other benefit for a junior leaving two hours early? What's the benefit?
Personally?
Well, we don't have to.
I, I think, you know, remember, and remember, it's also parent, you don't have to do it, it's parent-driven.
Right.
It's just the program and it's parent approval. If the parent doesn't sign, they can't leave, and we do have some people who want it but can't get it, so it's really up to the parent. I mean, maybe they're, maybe they've had, had to come home to babysit, maybe they have a job, maybe there's other issues, and, you know, just totally up to the parent.
What was the total, did you add up the total number participating?
A hundred sixty-five.
Well, a few years ago, when we changed the credits required for graduation within the realm of the reinvention plan, that cut out a certain level of electives, and this solution of online and these electives with blended learning, that is the low-cost solution to get back to this, so I think in answer to the goal that I think we would like, that we agree on, is, is that kids are signing up for that rather than doing the sign-out.
Right.
But like anything else, that's, that takes good communication and selling the idea to parents who will push their kids to, no, this is what your schedule's gonna be.
And, and remember, and we also talked about the math lab that will be available, so instead of signing out, you could go to the math lab to get additional help, as well as a writing lab, especially for our seniors, so who would be juniors and seniors who need to write essays and, and college applications and so forth, so that, in addition, will assist, hopefully, the kids in school.
I just think, since we've, go ahead, Jim, I'm sorry.
Another reason we added math lab, writing lab, academic assist, so when our students graduate from our high school, they'll be ready for college, and they won't have to take remedial courses at the college level, that's part of the goal as well.
Yeah, I'm just back to the sign-out, you know, I think I can, you know, I think student morale is way down in involvement, going to games, you know, attendance at extracurriculars and all that, and I kind of blame a little bit on student sign-out. You know, you're not there at the end of the day, so I'm not gonna go to the football game that night, or I'm not gonna go to the basketball game, because I've already gone home at one o'clock or twelve-thirty, and I've figured out something else to do tonight. So is it, is it too late for us to reconsider the junior sign-out, are we past that point, I mean, are you guys?
Well, you're gonna have to hire staff, because we won't have enough staff to.
How many juniors are we talking about?
So you're okay with seniors, you're just thinking about juniors?
Right.
I, I'd have to look, I don't know exactly, I, I can find out. But no matter what, we'll, out of that, there's quite a few. It's never too late to wonder things.
Not that I'm in favor or not in favor, but in response to your comment about school spirit, there were a whole lot of factors that went into that.
Right.
This may be being only one of them, the other was the post-secondary. A few years ago, we went from, from in the high school discouraging post-secondary overtly or not, and then we, you know, transformed into really encouraging it, and that was another factor, that was another factor. But no matter what's going on, my own observation this year is, school spirit is, is back on the rise compared to what it was two years ago, or last year even, it seems like it's, it's.
I agree.
It, it seems like it's back on the rise.
About the attendance is way down.
So, and I don't, you know, there's a whole lot of factors, and I, I don't.
I think, I just think the kids, they need to stay in school, I mean, that's my own personal opinion. We don't need sixteen-year-olds out running around at one o'clock when there's an opportunity to educate them.
Well, I, honestly, all this is what they've come up with based on us talking about that, so this is all the right directions, it's all good.
We have another board meeting coming up, if you'd like for them to
Yeah, we don't have to do it tonight, that's fine.
Come up with those exact figures, and then we have a final discussion of this, we can do that.
We're counting them now, we're almost done.
We, we can wait, if you, we don't need to make a decision on this this evening, we could revisit this one more time if.
Thanks, guys.
About fifty.
Probably about fifty.
Juniors.
Juniors, okay. So that's the third quarter.
So staffing-wise, though, in order to accommodate that, that would mean the addition of two new staff members to, or no, yeah, because that's, that's not all day, so we'd have to think about how to arrange that. Well, let's talk about that, and we'll come back to you with, with some more information. We'll let you know a little bit more about what that looks like with those fifty juniors.
Okay. Thanks.
The next, are we, we're good with that, then, thank you for putting on that presentation.
Thanks, guys.
The next item on the discussion items was a Workforce Academy presentation by Tim Lamb. We're going to skip over that this evening and do that at another board meeting in the future. So I'd like to go to the next item, which is the Ohio Improvement Process update, and Bonnie Meyer, our elementary school principal, has been instrumental on that team, she's a part of the district-led team, so she's going to come up and give an overview of the progress that's taken place. Thanks, Bonnie.
Sean told me the trick was not to start the play until you plugged it in, so hopefully that'll work. Okay, um, we had our district leadership team meeting last week, and at the conclusion of that meeting, Mr. Jordan asked that, that we present this to the board as an update of where we are after our fourth year of doing this. I know I presented last year just from the V E S side of things, but this is more of a district look. Okay, and just a reminder for all of you that might not remember about the Ohio Improvement Process, there's four stages. We began at the end, actually, of two thousand, or the beginning of two thousand and nine, in stage one as a team, and the district leadership team is comprised of the building administrators, the central office folks, the couple of board members, some parents, some community members, and teachers. So stage one was to identify the needs of the districts, we, we worked on that the first year, developing a plan then in stage two. We are currently in stage three, heading to stage four, where we're implementing the plan that was developed and also starting to evaluate the process. We had, there are three goals of the Ohio Improvement Process, the first goal is an increase in reading achievement, measured that by our Ohio Achievement Assessments, the Ohio Graduation Test, and local assessments, and along with that, to close the achievement gap for students with disabilities, same goal in math achievement. And then our third goal was to collaborate with the community to reduce the impact of non-academic factors that might affect academic success. Just briefly, I, I thought it would be worthwhile to just take a quick look at where we are with the local report card over that timeframe. I looked at the eight, the oh-eight, oh-nine report card up to our current report card. In our, in our O I P process, and with the district leadership team, we're looking to see a, hopefully, a steady increase in reading and math achievement. Not really seeing that in the, when we look at the state data, we see years where we have increases, years where we have some decreases, years where we have no real change, it's not consistent from grade to grade, it's not consistent from school to school, it's just kind of all over the place. But I think as we discuss that in our meetings, it's because, as we talk about, the target keeps changing, it keeps moving, and it's hard to keep up with that. So that's why we included in our goal, not just to look at that data, but also to look at some of the data that we take at the local level, and how are our students doing in that regard. So if you were to look at all of those report cards, you wouldn't see a lot of steady increase, just a lot of up and down. One good thing, I think, is, is that our performance index, which is that number that calculates the number of students who are achieving above the proficient level, and it kind of, it's kind of a weighted average, has been increasing yearly since we began this process, so we are moving in the right direction with our performance index. The value-added, which is another moving target, has been up sometimes and down sometimes. A Y P, which would be a good measure for us in terms of that gap for students with disabilities, has been not met three times and has been met one time during this course of the O I P. Again, that is a target that is increasing significantly, the number of students in every subgroup that have to pass the achievement tests and the graduation tests, excuse me, has been rising significantly over the past few years. For example, was, they, at, at one time, the subgroups, you would reach A Y P if that subgroup had like sixty-some percent of the students pass, pass the reading or math assessment, then it's now at about ninety percent. So the, the challenge with the students with disabilities, that these are our most challenged students, and we are looking at, in order to make A Y P, you need to get like ninety percent of those students also to pass those tests, so it's, it's very challenging. And then overall, our rating as a district, as we all know, in the last four years, we've had two effective and two excellent, and of course, last year was excellent, so that's excellent. This is another slide of the O I P process, and I just stuck this new one in here, because like, as always, the state keeps changing everything. But the only difference between this and the, and the first one is that it added this five-step process, which is this blue circle in here. And that's really kind of become the meat and potatoes of the, of the D L T and, and those other groups that funnel into the D L T. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Okay. Actually, right now, the district leadership team, as I said, is made up of all of the, the schools and, and our administrative offices and teachers and parents and board members, and then from the D L T, as that large group, the next group are the building leadership teams, and every one of our schools has a building leadership team, which is made up of some leaders, whether they're grade-level leaders or subject leaders, depending on the school and the waiver setup. And that B L T, the Building Leadership Team, reports to the D L T, and then this group below that, the T B T, Mr. Jordan loves all these acronyms, the teacher-based teams are the, the workers, the ones that are, that are doing all of the work of this to, to report it out. So those are teacher-based teams, at the elementary school, that would be each grade level is its own teacher-based team, led by the team leader, and then the other people that are part of that grade level. We actually split that in third grade, because we are departmentalized, so we have a math third grade, T B T, and a, and a reading, T B T. At the middle school, they also have a mixture of some grade-level teams and some subject area teams, and at the high school, the, the T B Ts are content-oriented, so you have a social studies team and, and also grade leveled, so they have a different little setup. Those teams support each other, the, the data comes from the teacher-based team, it's brought to the building leadership team, that kind of summarizes it, and then it's passed on to the district leadership team. The work of that whole, all of those groups is to align the work that we do, day, every day in the schools, to meet the district goals that were decided upon in a collaborative way, and do that by using data and making intentional decisions based on that data that's collected, sharing the leadership amongst all of the stakeholders within the district, and using that information to have some job embedded professional development. Today was the last of our four waiver days, where we have used that time to have professional development for all of our teachers that directly relates to that work that's done in the T B Ts. So we are in phase three, or stage three, which is implementing and monitoring the focus plan, and I've talked about a few of these things already. All schools and, and the district have now established their V L Ts and their T B Ts, and the T B Ts have been trained in the five-step process. The five-step process is a way of looking at data that we collect at, in the school. Teachers come together collaboratively and create some common assessments, and then they give those assessments to the students, then they analyze the data from that common assessment, and then they look at what students still need support to achieve that standard, and then they provide intervention, and then they test again or assess again, and then from that, we make decisions about instructional strategies. An example of that might be in, in the middle school, they, they do a lot of writing, and while it's not a tested area on the Ohio Achievement Assessment, it is part of the, the math and the reading assessments on that test, because there's a lot of free response. So they determined that they had a lot of difficulty with that, and so they started looking at some programs that might help with their writing, and in fact, have adopted a program called Write to Learn, which has been having a lot of success for them. So those decisions to, to look at those programs and those products that are out there are based on the data that's collected in the T B Ts. That's all, all of that is part of that five-step process, look at the data, analyze the data, retest, give interventions, and then come back and see if there's something that, that needs to, to happen. Overall, in a grade level, maybe, another example would be that there was a, an issue in, in a third-grade math class where everybody seemed to be struggling with the same concept on the, the pre-test, and then they did the instruction, the post-test showed that not that many kids really improved on it, so go back and reteach that information, look at those teachers that had better success at it, and get some help from, from them, and look at instructional strategies and, and that. The point is that teachers are talking to teachers, and teachers are collaborating, and everything becomes more standardized. And then the report out from the T B T to the B L T, which then goes to the D L T. So what kind of data do we collect? Well, at, at the elementary school, we have lots of data. We use curriculum-based assessments, which are things that are already prepared by our series that we use for maybe for reading and math. There are teacher-created common assessments, which is really a bulk of how we assess our kids, the teachers work collaboratively to come up with what those assessments should be. The elementary school, we now follow a standards-based instruction and assessment, so teachers are building assessments that are specific to standards from the Common Core, and then those assessments are, are specific, given to students as a pre-test. Instruction occurs, we take a post-test, and then we see who maybe needs more intervention to move forward. We use the Success Maker Program that was adopted by our district as a way of looking at how students are gaining in reading and math. We use Ames Web, which is a progress monitoring tool for reading and math, a diagnostic tool. Our third graders look at the fall O A A reading results this year to look at, because we are fortunate enough to give that test in the fall, see how the kids are doing, and then prepare them again in the spring, so they strip out all that data, look at areas that are strengths and weaknesses. We give the C R O L in kindergarten, which is a state-required assessment for all incoming kindergarten students, and then we have diagnostic tests, K to three. And all of those things, we can use that data as part of that T B T data. Sometimes we focus on the teacher-made assessments, and sometimes we use some of the data from other areas. The middle school also has their T B Ts creating common assessments, they use curriculum-based assessments, they also have the previous O A A results from the year prior, looking at how students did on their grade-level test, as well as how the students have done historically on the current grade level. They have practice tests from the O A A, and they also use Success Maker data. I know at the middle school, they are very much in their T B Ts, looking at those teacher-created common assessments that look at specific standards again, and they follow that same five-step process, give the assessment, look at the data, and then give interventions to kids based on that. At the high school. At the high school, again, the teachers are creating common assessments within the grade level for the same course and looking at specific areas that are giving difficulty and then reteaching or providing intervention to those students. They just recently went through their semester exams and stripped out the questions and looked at how did kids do in certain areas, what parts were strengths, what were weak. I think that the difference then in the instruction that is, or in what's happening there is that instead of saying, you know, the semester exam is over, we're moving on, their teachers are looking at what things did students not do well on the semester exam that we feel are very critical in order for this course to, for them to move on in this course. And then they are looking at providing intervention to those students who did not do well on that. And then they also have at the high school, because eighth grade is there, they have OAA, and then because tenth grade is there, they have OGT. So they can look at those previous results and the practice tests that go along with it. And Success Maker Program only goes to eighth grade, so all eighth-grade students participate in that. And then low-achieving ninth through twelfth graders who are still in need of below-grade level interventions are using the Success Maker Program, and we can look at their gains. Explore and Plan, Heidi asked me to add this at the end, that's part of the ACT prep, and the Explore is the, what's that? Is that the eighth-grade version of the?
Right.
Okay. Okay. So those are some standardized tests for high school students, then another set of data that's used. Okay. So what's it really mean? I think we could sum it up and say this is an instructional shift, the way that we now look at the instruction. We use assessments for learning as opposed to assessments of learning. At the end of the semester, and you give that summative test, that is an assessment of learning. But what is done prior to that are a lot of these common assessments that are assessments for learning. What's going on? What do we need to focus on? What interventions do students need? The common assessments are addressing very specific standards. You know, in the elementary school, you know, they look at, you know, being able to identify coins is a difficult concept for a kindergarten student. And so those are, that's a very specific standard that is looked at and tested, and kids get intervention on that. The data that's being analyzed is all part of that five-step process. Teachers are now working in collaboration in various degrees. That's, it gets more difficult as the grade levels increase because there's more variety of things, and you don't have as many people teaching the same thing. I have six people teaching third, second grade, and so they can collaborate on all that. You know, there's one person teaching anatomy and physiology. So it's more difficult to find that collaboration as it becomes a lot more departmentalized. But some, they're able to do that in some areas. Students receive interventions when they don't meet the standard, and so they get an opportunity to master their learning. And there are changes in instructional strategies that occur in response to the data that's Then we don't want to forget Goal Three, which was in collaboration with the community to reduce the impact of non-academic factors that affect student achievement. There's a lot of things going on, and I know this list is not complete, but these are some things that are currently happening that are looking at working with the community to kind of try to get over some of those things that aren't academic, but that stand in the way of academics. The Olveas Anti-Bullying Program was adopted by the district and is being used in all three schools. There's the drug testing program that's taking place at the high school, the drug task force that incorporates all of the schools, and there's members from each school that's on that committee that looks at that. We have what we call Success Camp after-school tutoring at the elementary school and at the middle school. It's a free tutoring program for those students who are in need of more intervention that we can give them during the day. It's free to parents. We provide, the middle school provides transportation to those kids to the elementary school on the bus so that they can get home on the bus. We have an additional hour at the elementary school of free daycare for kids so that parents, if they can't get them at 4:30, they can come get them at 5:30. So we have about ten kids taking advantage of that and about fifty-some kids in the tutoring program. I don't know the numbers of the Saylorway students for there. We have our, what we call our Community Partnership Program at the elementary school. We're on Monday nights that we're in school, so not tonight. We have free tutoring that's provided by Dave Johnson and his friends from the church that come and provide free tutoring for our students. We also have the laptops available for our parents or other siblings to come in if they want to and use those on Monday nights. And then the VES library is open on Monday nights for our community. At the high school, they're now involving parents in the scheduling process. At the high school and the middle school, the Life Skills Curriculum is being taught, which is a, you know, healthy lifestyle type of course that looks at some of those non-academic factors. And then we also have a drug awareness program at the elementary school. I know there's other things that are probably on there that I'm forgetting, but that was the beginning of that list. So we've moved on to step four of the OIP process, and at this stage, we're going to start focusing on this at our next meeting, which is in March. And we're going to look at revisiting our goals. You know, where have we, where have we gotten to? And is it time to kind of take a look and revisit what we're doing with that process? That's it.
Excellent, Bonnie. I bet, having been involved in it from the start, that I think was the best summary yet of where we're at. And I think I can speak for the group and say, four years ago, when we were meeting, listening to the facilitators who came in from ODE or that were explaining the program, there we were answering questions, having dialogue, but I don't think any one of us thought of where we'd be right now. It has really come together, but it was the last meeting on the summary page, it's time to revisit the goals. Because in that year one, we established the goals really strictly looking at state test data. And I think what we've evolved into, maybe slightly away from where we talked in the first year, is all that local assessment and data gathering local. It is phenomenal what they're doing district-wide now. I also want to emphasize that, you know, we all know that there's some push in teacher evaluation, and that's this controversial thing. But I think that the main thing here that is great, that maybe we should be focusing on is, is not evaluating individual teachers, but the teams. Because the teams that work best together, you know, the total's going to be greater than some of the parts. And I see that when I listen to the dialogue in these meetings.
Well, we've collected a lot of data, and I know that you have the report from the last meeting that you could share all the nitty-gritty. I didn't think we all wanted to hear about that today. Goes on and on and on. But there is a lot of, there's, decisions are made based on data. It's not just made on gut feeling and what we think is going on, but rather, can we stand behind it? So I think that's making a big difference in how kids are learning. I really do.
Thank you.
Very good.
I would encourage the rest of the board, I know that Shelley, even before she was a board member, was part of the district leadership team, and I would encourage the others that if you would include them in the meeting date, and if you can adjust your schedule to sit in on that, that would be great. Now, obviously, if in fact that happens and we have more than a quorum, we have to handle it differently, but we can work that out.
It's not led by us, it's led by them, so.
I will do that. Okay. The next item is Superintendent Treasurer Goal Review. And would you like to go first, Amy, or would you like me to?
Beauty before age.
And if it's beauty, you go first.
All righty. At your places this evening, you see a copy of my original goals that were drafted this fall, and I have gone through and updated those to where we are since October and based on our progress. The first goal was to increase presentation of information to the community and staff to provide greater understanding of school finance topics. That included things like photo journal articles, web postings, and special emphasis on communication of the facility project. And you'll see listed there, we have had articles each month in things about our financing project for the facilities and the one most recently about the district audit report. The second goal was to continue to play an active role in the community task force to help lead the district to financial and program stability for the future. That again encompasses the facility project and financing, repurposing or disposing of excess assets, be that buildings or equipment, evaluating district functions and staffing for cost benefit, as well as looking at ongoing work at looking at shared services for the schools and other organizations. Since the inception of the goal this fall, there has been significant investment in the completion of our facility financing, bond ratings, as well as planning for maximum savings and ongoing operations and preparation of the request for proposal for the construction administration services. Also, I have been working on an ongoing basis with our realtor to facilitate review for potential offers, buyers. And we, at this writing, had three parties of interest, as well as working with the YMCA regarding long-term planning for Lake School. In addition, I've been working with the district leadership team on the transitional planning for the district, for various district-level functions, as well as enrollment projections and other data to evaluate needs. And a very recent example, working with the operations department as we look at our forward facility needs and how our district vehicle fleet could be adjusted with that, and we're able to implement some savings there. Goal Three is continuing update of student fundraising and procedures for athletics and extracurricular activities. That involves stakeholders, staff, software, that type of thing. This one, I would say probably if there's a weakness in the areas that I've been able to make progress on since this fall, I would assess this to be it. But I have had ongoing work with the athletic director, building secretaries and principals to increase those internal controls, and have also met with the board president to look at some of our fundraising opportunities with signage. It's been a busy fall, but we've done some good things.
I have a comment in that, or question. The task force that we mentioned, just before the meeting, Mr. Rice and I really brought that up, somewhat indirectly related to this, but when was the last time that team of people that were part of a finance committee from about a year ago? When was the last time you met with them or brought them in for input?
Input, that would have been in the September, October timeframe when we were updating them on the various aspects of our financing options.
Okay. And at that time, that meeting was strictly about the facility project?
We reviewed the five-year forecast as well.
Okay. I have five goals, and what I did was put out on my principal blog a complete video for the community to take a look at and refer to. So tonight, I'm not going to cover every single detail of this. I'll give an overview of some of the highlighted areas and not cover each detail, as I said. So if you have any questions, though, please stop me. The first goal, achieve academic excellence in the classroom, building and district-wide by holding accountable for the following practices. And then I have a whole series of action steps, and I'll just go over some of those action steps. I did provide these to you in writing electronically, and I hope that you were able to take a look at them, but once again, I'm just reviewing them. You saw the Ohio Improvement Process, and Bonnie did a real thorough job of that this evening, of going over all the steps within that process. And that really ties into this academic achievement with excellence in the classroom. So that goes hand in hand. We're working on student learning objectives, measuring student improvement that's going to be developed for each subject. So we've been working with these new Common Core standards that have come up now that are going to be mandatory, and we're working with specific learning objectives in collaboration with North Point. That collaboration, we think, is going to be essential, and it won't be a reinventing of the wheel. We'll be able to get together with other districts working on those specific objectives, and that will help us in the process. One of the things that you saw in the collection of this data is just constant assessment. We do it through Success Maker, Gradpoint, all the tools that you saw up there, and we're looking to try to produce a year's worth of growth for a year's worth of instruction. So that's the goal, to continue towards that. Aligning and differentiating all professional development to achieve value-added growth for each student. Our teachers do meet, as you heard from this Ohio Improvement Process and core subject areas, and they plan and develop to create student learning objectives. And they create a curriculum that's aligned with those new core standards. So collaboration is the key. This Ohio Improvement Process is the key, using the whole system to try to make sure that we're looking at this goal and holding ourselves accountable. One of the things that I believe that we can get better at was the last objective or action step that I wrote about, which is creating and developing this written education plan that gives an individualized plan for each student. We're perfecting that, we're improving that, but we're not there yet. So I can honestly tell you that that's the ultimate goal, is to make sure that each student has an individualized plan within the use of this Ohio Improvement Process, which is those improvements in the reading and math areas. So we're looking at using that explore and plan process, the different tests that we have, and creating an individualized plan to meet that first goal. A second goal that we set collaboratively with the board was to increase the graduation rate of 100% for all of our seniors. We did create a specific list for those seniors in September of this school year. So we've identified an exact number of students, there are eight to be exact. And so we're producing documentation for those classes that need to be complete, and our intervention plan is put in place for each one of those students.
Were eight from last year or?
That's this year.
Oh, there's eight that are at risk?
This year.
Gotcha.
For this school year.
Do you evaluate that mid-year as well, in case there's some that were okay in September but have fallen down?
Yeah, they're constantly in the process of the evaluation. Going back to the last goal, which I think that you'll probably get to, would be tracking all those non-graduating seniors. I think that that's been a question of how we can do that better. Tim Lamb, that's now at the Academy, has developed a plan for every senior that didn't graduate, and he's checking on those completed graduation rates that they needed in 2012. And he's just looking at interventions and, not interventions, but he's making phone calls and personal visits to those kids that didn't graduate last year and trying to bring them back into the fold and see if it's possible that we get to those kids that didn't graduate. We're hoping that we don't have any of those this year.
Has he had any success with the people from last year?
I don't know.
The answer is yes, because you wrote it right in here in front of me. One of them, they did complete the graduation in the summer after the rest of the class graduated, but there were seven kids, according to what you wrote in here in the accomplishments. But I, just pointing out, this was the gist of what Mr. Dawson and I wanted to make clear that even after graduation, we do this. So I'm very glad that Mr. Lamb is on this.
Yeah.
Because this isn't what shows up on a report card. These kids are, I don't think, are, the report card and graduation rate of the state report card, I think it's only measuring percentage of kids who graduated when they were supposed to graduate. These are all kids who are past that, but we in Vermillion are making it our business to. to still stay close to them and make sure they graduate. And I think that was, correct if I'm wrong, Dale, that that was really what we wanted a big part of this goal to be about.
Absolutely.
So that's good.
I'd like to see within 12 months, you know, before June of this year, to get all those kids through from last year.
Every student, going back to your question, Shelley, does receive that report, and we are making sure that we're going to stay after the documentation of this. We're providing counseling and wraparound assistance, and Heidi and the guidance counselors are meeting to review those records for all the at-risk students. And so this is an ongoing goal, and we're getting better at it, but we're not there where we need to be. The third goal was to create goals for principals and supervisors that reflect the district and superintendent's goals. We're working with a new principal evaluation tool this year, and each one of the principals have been given a mid-year using the tool. We're also using the teacher evaluation system. So that goes along with the three simple goals that we created for academic excellence, and they also go along with the Ohio Improvement Process goals as far as the use of that tool. The principals are active with their building leadership teams, as you've heard tonight. So that goes along with the goals. So that one is a relatively self-explanatory, I think, that we are creating those action steps. The fourth goal was a monitoring and administering of our substance abuse policy. I have to say that I think that this has been a very successful undertaking, and I've got a quick idea that we'll present to you tonight as an addition to this, that I think that it wouldn't be bad to continue on with. But we do hold monthly meetings with our drug task force that reviews the progress, and we're very happy with the turnout with and at those meetings. So we've been doing those since September. Jim's looked at a list of six agencies that are willing to assist with the students who are identified. When we say that we want to create affordable counseling options, so we have looked at those for the community, and we want to be sure that we're finding ways that they could follow up with that counseling in an affordable way. But we've been very lucky and blessed so far that there haven't been a great need for students to be identified. There's been a very low amount of students that have actually tested positive.
Like, less than five?
Way less than five.
Like one? Are we two?
One.
Well, listen.
And one negative.
And we've done over 400 tests so far, correct?
Thirty.
Fantastic. It's much better than any school district that we spoke to.
One of the things that we wanted to do was continue to provide some education in grades four through nine and expand it in K through three and 10 to 12. So we are having specific teachers in grades four through nine receive the training on the life skills curriculum, and key teachers are providing the instruction to the students during the second semester. Students in grades kindergarten through three are also exposed to a substance abuse education through their drug-free curriculum, and so we're looking to try to, though, expand this into grades 10 through 12 as well. We haven't, we don't want to culminate this endpoint yet on our drug task force. That was one thing that when you start a task force, you usually like to have an end to it, but I don't believe we're ready yet. We'll know when we are ready, and I think we still feel we have more work to do. The last...
When are we going to review the budget for the drug testing? What is that set up for?
Jim?
I mean, it's a little...
Okay.
...ridiculous money. Put aside 25,000, we're keeping track how much is being spent, but he knows that's a goal we're going to have.
Okay.
So we've been in conversations about that. Can we get a monthly printout of how many kids we tested?
And so it's completely open? You could have everything from hair to?
Right now, we do most of urine.
Yeah, right, but it's still, but it's still completely open. We can do any one of those, which they signed off on.
My last goal was to investigate the addition of an HR company, and an action step was to interview and choose an outside consulting firm who's going to investigate services available of this HR firm and determine if it's applicable to our school district. And I gave you a list of some of the things that we've done so far in terms of contracting to outside vendors, and I won't go through all of those that were on the list because I know that you saw them. I'm going to ask Dave to continue to work with me on this one because he has the most expertise in this area, and so I'd like to try to make this more of a priority to get this goal done for the rest of the year. So that's just the highlights, it wasn't all the details. Please, the community can look at that principal's blog and get every single detail that's in it. It's available on the video within the blog. Are there any questions?
No.
I want to say I've heard lots of praise for all the extra activities offered, especially Sailor Way from parents. Really pleased to hear that.
And that goes along with the goal of the substance abuse program?
Right, right.
We wanted to offer more alternatives.
I love it.
And it also then goes along with the OIP, I think, as well, because it helps to meet the...
I don't think we as a board, I don't think we defined the budget. We kind of left that because it wasn't a voting item to us. But Mr. Bellata mentioned 25,000. Is that what you established this budget just for drug testing?
Right.
Or was that for all of these things we were doing? Life skills?
No.
Curriculum and the extracurriculars? We didn't decide this, and I'm just, right now, looking for clarification of...
I thought we did decide that specifically. We actually made a motion to...
I think we gave a guideline, I don't remember.
I don't think it was voted on.
Right, because we didn't need to, because it was under the 25,000.
Yes, but I don't, but I don't, I think we left it to them, and that's why I asked the question.
Just for drug testing.
Okay.
As long as we're on my goals, and substance abuse, as you know, is one of them, and we just discussed it. An idea came today from our assistant principal. They're, on April 8th, going to hold a community meeting that is about bullying and the Olvea Training that, and the Olvea bullying program that we have. And they have a, the Ohio Department of Transportation is going to bring a simulator to that meeting that will let people know what the dangers of texting and driving are, so there'll be a machine there to show how that works and how students need to be avoiding texting at all costs. One of the things, though, that we thought, as long as that's a community meeting on the 8th, that we'd like to possibly introduce the idea of an opt-in for substance abuse. That would mean that any parent that would be interested to want to have their student tested on a voluntary basis would opt in.
Jim, do you think that would tax your budget? Or would be, would be okay if you had another 100 kids sign up?
Probably would not tax the budget because we only do 30 students a week. What we might do is increase, would increase the pool.
Right.
So it would lower the chances of someone getting chosen, but I'd be keeping track. And the highest we'd have, the highest number of times students is tested is five. And some walk a lot, three times, some four.
Has everybody been at least once? I know it's random, no? Okay.
It's all random, so some have not.
It's a thought. We talked about the possibility of doing this...
I love it. It's a great idea.
Next year, but I think it would tie in well to the community event, and if we started letting parents know that that option would be available now.
Jim, do we know the percentage right now that we're testing that are in the pool? Is it 40% of the population?
I'm not sure. Can you do that off for me?
I'll put that in the weekend review after we calculate.
Okay.
I think the topic of opt-in, if my memory serves you right, when it was discussed way back upon approval of the policy, we all were in agreement. If, in fact, you wanted to go that way and include it, I think you had 100% board agreement at that time.
Then I'd like to go ahead sooner than later than, and if it's okay.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I think from this, and I shouldn't be speaking for the board, but I'm saying this so that you know, I think the past, everybody, so you don't need to, you don't need to come back and bring that to us. That's a go.
Does the meeting end the 8th?
6:30.
6:30.
That's tentative right now, but that seems to be the best time and date.
At the high school?
At the high school. Okay, one last thing that's not on this discussion items. Mr. Dawson and Mr. Habermill and I met on the policy committee, and Policy 8800, and I should have brought a copy with you so that you could see the policy, has the addition of some language in it that makes available for us to display next to our flags in each school, "In God We Trust" or another, there's one other statement, and I apologize for not bringing it with me. So there's a choice of two statements that could be added, but it has to be done through Veterans Association or the Lions Club, and it would have to be a donation from them to allow that signage to occur. I think that that's something that Lions or the Veterans Association would probably support, and I would recommend that we would go ahead and just have that signage put up next to the flags.
I agree 100%.
If the policy group met, and you've talked about it, then I would suggest, like any other policy, get it to each one of us by email in advance of the meeting, and then if you're going to recommend it, it's on as a resolution.
Okay.
Have you reached out to?
I asked Cindy to come up with a standardized sign so that when we go to the organizations that would make the donation, and I did that today, they'll know what the cost of everything would be for that process. So they'll have a dollar figure, and it's not going to be expensive. It should be a very inexpensive donation.
We could do it internally.
But it'll be an impact, I think, on the community, because it will be visible. And we'll say it's donated by whoever does the donation. I'll go forward with that, then.
Absolutely.
And that's all I have on discussion items.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, the only thing I wanted to add, you jumped quickly from the goals.
Sorry.
We know how much time you've spent on the facility project, and I just want to emphasize that when we reviewed these goals in detail from July to September, as the board, the facility stuff was all under the treasure. And so I want to just make sure that in the future, as these reports come to us, that it's you two collaborating, because we as a board put that on within the treasurer's goals.
The financial portion of it.
Yes, but everything that happens there, design-wise, has a financial number put to it. Every single dialogue had that, every single one. So it has to come back that way.
I'm hoping that that's going to start shifting over to mostly financial.
Not quite at that point, I understand.
And one of the things that I did mention, and I did, though, put it in writing, is that what's suffered the most at this point is my walkthroughs and visits to the schools. That has been the single most thing. I'm not in the buildings as much as I have been in the past, and I don't like it. I know that I have to get back out there, and I'm hoping that that's going to start shifting.
Good.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, great. So moving on to number seven, public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board? Come on up. If you don't mind, come on up to the microphone right here. Come on up to this microphone, it just...
Oh, I can talk loud enough for you.
Maybe to this mic. Sean, is that one on?
I'm Diane Chesnup, and I'm here tonight because of senior citizens. I want, have been watching what you have been discussing and presentation on the South Street School. I deal a lot with senior citizens. They're involved with us as volunteers, and I hear them talking, and being a good listener, on where are they going to live and how Vermillion needs a place for them. So I'm here tonight to, after talking with many people, to say to you, we really need the South Street School for senior citizens to live, and they can live and then assisted living. Many people are really alone in this community, and they don't know what the next step will be. And yes, we have Edison Village, but that isn't exactly what is needed. That's individual people living and can live alone, but other ones need to be in a building. South Street is a perfect building for it. And the reason we say that is because we went to school there. We're graduating, our graduating class, we're celebrating in August 60 years. And I, by the way, I looked for my picture out here in the hallway and didn't see it. But anyhow, the concern we have is South Street is large enough, you can have the assisted living and other things happening in there. The auditorium can be used by the community, as well as the Golden Slipper Club or whatever they have at the Y. The cafeteria can be updated, a little more formal like they have over at the Methodist Home. But anyhow, we're here seriously, feeling that it's a perfect location, it fits the location of the street. We have people wanting to be able to walk downtown if they can, take their scooters downtown. And I've talked to the residents, and we feel it's a real good fit for location. Building is good, solid, always have something wrong with buildings. However, when you look at it, in our class, many of our people who moved south for the winter or for a year round are moving back to be with their families, at least in arms' length of them. And so we are really here seriously asking you to look at that, because these people have paid for the schools after many years of taxes. And so I do want to say one thing. Several years ago, when we were forming the Friends of Harbor Town, I did have a senior come to me and begged that we do something or have somebody in the community build a senior's place for living. The woman was quite concerned because she was looking for a place to be, that she would have security and so forth, which the only place she could see herself going was to the High Rises in Sandusky. She did not want to leave her community. She had given a lot to the community and wanted to continue in ways that she could. So she was begging at that time because the decision had to be made that year for her. We did have Kiwanis at one time looking at building, a building in Vermillion, I think it was out near Adams Street, and so there are more and more, especially with the economy the way it is. So we're asking you, and the neighbors have already talked to me, they called me, I didn't expect that, and said, we think the fit is for our seniors in our community, and we're asking you to seriously look at that, and we're all watching. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Chesnup.
Thank you.
I'm Joyce Nickley, and I also graduated from Vermillion back in 1953, and Diane has spoken very well about that. And many of our friends do, they go to Florida for the winter or a few months, they come back, and some of them from our class, they can't afford to have a place that costs them too much, and South Street School, I think, also would be a good fit.
I'm Joyce Nickley, and I also graduated from Vermillion back in 1953. And Diane has spoken very well about that. And many of our friends do, they go to Florida for the winter or a few months, they come back. And some of them from our class, they can't afford to have a place that costs them too much. And South Street School, I think, also would be a good fit. You know, it isn't always the best thing to see how much money you can get out of something. And the senior citizens have supported the school. And not only did I graduate there, I taught there. And then I taught at Sailor Way. And I coached the volleyball team at Sailor Way. My husband graduated from there. And there are a lot of us, it's amazing that we've lived so long, but we, we did. And we're still moving around. We support things in the community. And when our friends come back from Florida or Arizona, they support the community too. And please consider the senior citizens, and like Diane said, it's great because they're within walking distance or golf cart, we have a golf cart, of the third Thursday in the summer and all the activities that are available here. And some of them too are also volunteering with Vermillion and Bloom and some of the other things. And I have to agree with Diane, and many of our friends feel the same way. And please consider. Don't, I wish I could tell you I won the lottery and I'd make sure there was enough money. So.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Please, sir? Anywhere you like.
I'm Terry Smith, retired teacher, taxpayer, and parent of several students who have graduated from the Vermillion system. Thousands of my former students, as a matter of fact. I chose not to speak. At the special meeting because the topic that I, dear and dear to my heart right now, I'd already spoken to the whole board after they adjourned on the last regular meeting. I also expected some community persons to be here to speak. There were a couple in the audience, but I assume that because of the, of no public speaking time on the agenda, as well as your. Yeah, yes. Your. Whatever it's called, executive session, right. That they either left, well, they must have because they weren't here later on. Anyway, I speak against the large gym in the, in the construction of the elementary wing to Sailor Way. It's too expensive. And I don't know what you intend to cut from the original plan. I was on the Facilities Commission, and by the way, don't misunderstand me. I still support very wholeheartedly that project, putting the, all our students in one campus. I've been in favor of for a couple of years. So the only concern I have is that large, expensive gym. I told you in that, Jim Ennis, I spoke to you after the last regular meeting, after adjournment, and a letter to the photo journal, my reasons. And I think you know them, and I don't think I need to repeat them now. But I don't know if you've got any phone calls. I found out your numbers and put them in the paper. I told a number of people who were very hesitant for some reason or other about contacting. One person I spoke to said they called the board office but didn't like talking to a recording. Well, I don't either, but I know how to get to at least somebody that will leave a message. Couldn't convince him at all. But anyhow, I am so fearful that we'll lose support of a great many people for future issues to vote on the ballot, and we have too many of those anyhow. So I plead with you. I'd like to know what you're going to cut. I hope it's nothing to do with the energy saving because that's going to help pay for the project. I hope it has nothing to do with security. I've been very, very pleased with, to know what security measures we have and some that perhaps can be initiated into the project. But almost $800,000 for that gym is just too much. And I've already mentioned about the dressing rooms are clear across the building. That doesn't work. I don't like the idea of the kids having to eat in a lobby, which was the superintendent's word last meeting, regular meeting. They can have a multipurpose room where they can eat in and have elementary activities, and that's what I'm in favor of. I think that the present gym of the old high school on Decatur Street can be utilized by the community very well, whether it becomes the Y facility or not. So I've spoken my mind. I hate to be a broken record, and please don't get the idea that I'm fighting with the board. I respect all of you, but I am very strongly opposed to this gym naming. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the board? Thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate your input. Okay, moving on to number eight, the treasurer's report.
You have at your places this evening the financial reports for the month ending January 31st. And real quickly before I delve into these, I mentioned when I talked about the press releases that had been done. The most recent one was, and since our last meeting was in regard to our audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2012, we just completed our 10th year of having perfect audit reports in the district without any violations or citations. So that's a pretty good celebration to have.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Sort of like fishing for compliments. Your investment report is at your place. We've earned $44,000, almost $500 in interest through December. We don't have all of the January bank statements in place, yet I think the last of those came in today before, or after these reports were printed. We're still again low on interest, but at, at the market rates as they are at this point in time.
They've benefited from that as well, so.
Yes, we have. It's been a nice time to borrow. That's exactly correct. In our forecast comparison, which is the second page, we have not, we have started to get in February. They don't show on this January forecast some of our tax settlement, property tax settlements that will be coming in. So we'll soon have our final numbers on our tax revenue for the year. And currently, we are ahead of our estimates by $7,368. Our expenses, we are below budget by $43,000, I'm sorry, $35,800. So overall, we're just about $43,172 ahead of our projections for this point in the year. But that, when you're talking about nearly $23 million, we're, we're pretty close to, to on the money, which is, which is a good, a good thing for the year. And overall, for the month, we have been about 70%. I see the dates didn't get, I didn't get the date changed at the top of, of this. But we are about 70% overall of our revenue received for the year. That has been helped, of course, by the funding that was received for the facility projects. But that, again, is also skewing where it shows we've only spent 31% of the year allocated budget. If you look up at the operating funds, we're at that 55% to 58% area where we would anticipate we would be at this point. That 31 has been skewed by the fact that we've only spent about 4% of that large amount that came in for the construction project. Other than that, we'll keep an eye on that state budget and continue to tweak the forecast as that information becomes available.
Thanks, Amy. Any questions? And item two, I recommend a resolution to approve the following donations. $500 to the John A. Smith Scholarship Fund from Christine Smith, and a black indector leaf blower and battery pack for the, from the fifth quarter.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
And Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to, still staying with item eight, B, the superintendent's report.
Okay, at this time, before I have Mr. Rini come up from Green Space, I just want to let the community know that it's come to our attention that we may have to consider a possible redesign and adjustment to the project. It's too early to tell at this point what exactly this entails. And I just want to let you know that a meeting scheduled between Green Space Construction and Lesco Associates this Wednesday, they'll look at some of those details and be able to give us a report back out on that relatively soon, we're hoping. And I'd also like to let, I will be letting the Facility Committee that we had put together know that I would like to be getting together with them soon to discuss some of those details then that will come out from Green Space and Lesco.
Are you trying to do that this week with the committee as well, or?
I will be sending the committee an email tomorrow, and then we'll be looking at the very near future of meeting with them as soon as I could get more information back from Lesco and from Green Space. So at this time, I'd like to have Tim Rini from Green Space come up and just give us a short presentation on what some of the things that he can tell us about this evening. I know he doesn't know any details yet about those other things, but he will be giving us some other details on what Green Space will be doing. Thanks, Tim.
Thanks. Thank you. We have some construction acronyms for you teachers who teach now instead of all the educational ones. Okay, so what you've gone through already so far is the SD phases, is the schematic design. That was selecting what you wanted in the school. You know, we know you want a gym. We know that, that, you know, a cafeteria has been selected, this, this type of classrooms that you're going to have. You want an open classroom concept. And right now, the architect has, has moved into the DD, or the Design Development Phase. And what you're trying to do now is get an idea of where you are with the budget. I know there was a concern this evening, and that's, that's still a concern for everybody at this phase, is to make sure you can get in the budget. So what'll happen is the architect and the construction manager of my company will, will put together an estimate from the design development drawings. And that'll tell you whether or not you're in budget. The goal being to get to the CD phase, the construction drawing phase. And until, and until you hit the construction drawings, you can't get out to bid. So right now, we're on target, not counting the developments that happened last week that Mr. Peckman just mentioned, but the, the goal was to get out to bid by, by May, you know, middle or end of May, so we could break down and start construction in June. And just a little bit on scheduling, there's, there's, what, what also can happen possibly is a, called an early site package. That would allow the utilities to start underground, possibly even before the construction drawings for the building are done. And we'll look at that this week. And we also have a meeting next week with the site engineers. So we'll look with them to see if it'll make sense to put an early site package together. You know, to help speed things up, whether or not there are delays. If we can get into a program like that, we will. The other part of the scheduling I wanted to mention, it's, believe it or not, it's really going to be important to get, get going by May or June because a tough thing to do is going to be to get the roof on by winter next year, by next, you know, about December. Who knows when it'll hit. I mean, it's, we've had some easy winters, but, but still, if you're not in the roof in this kind of weather, you really lose the opportunity to do a lot of work. So, so that'll be something we'll be watching as well. So other than that, we'll just, I'll keep you updated every month at, at the meetings. And give me a call if you want any updates between then.
A job of our size, if we break ground in May, what's the, break ground in June?
Pardon me, Dale.
What's, what's the estimated timeline from start to finish?
Well, I'm really not, they, they show, I mean, they're, the schedule that the architect gave us was 12 to 18 months. And really, there's such a big gap there because it's going to all depend on when and how you can get the roof on. And I haven't seen any of the drawings other than, you know, just what you guys have seen, just floor plans. I haven't seen any elevations or any design drawings. But we will, together with the architect, be able to put a, a very precise schedule that, that'll answer that. Hopefully, in the next month or so, we can, we can start doing that.
So maybe, worst case, maybe look at moving into a new building, maybe the, the Christmas break of 14, 15 then?
Right, right. Can't get in, can't get in in August, it would be in, in January. But especially moving from an offsite, I, I, the job I'm on now, we moved onsite. In other words, we were in the same building. We had half the building closed, and the move wasn't too bad because they just basically moved down the hall, you know, so it wasn't too bad. Moving from, although the other school isn't that far, but moving from one school to another would bring in some, some tougher situations, but they could all be overcome. But it just is not a lot of time to move over a Christmas break, you know, in a week or two.
Do you guys help coordinate the move, or is that something we would do?
No, absolutely.
You guys do that?
Furniture, all the, everything. Help organize everything.
Good, okay.
Mr. Rini and I in our meeting discussed how to keep everyone updated. And I think that going forward, the principal or the facility blog would be the best way to get information from Mr. Rini. I'll take and extract all of the information, or maybe we'll just, depending on what format comes in, just put it right to the blog with additional comments. Today, a furniture company was at Vermillion Elementary School. Cindy Akers went over, took some pictures, and added them to the blog. So that's just an example of how we're going to continue to update the board and the community about each and every step that's going to be made.
I, I would like to request that whenever there's an update to the blog, that as board members.
Send you an email.
A simple email with a subject line and the link. And that way, we're not forced to check it all the time.
Okay.
We're doing it when you've updated it and we get a link so that we don't have to go dig back through to find, okay, what is that website? We're not looking at all the time. If you would do that, that would help us a lot.
It's easy to find, but there's a lot of stuff now that's been posted on that website.
Okay. We'll do that.
Good.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
While we're on this topic, the, the things that came up, we have said that when Mr. Habermill and I came in to discuss last week with, with you and Ms. Hendricks, that we kind of had a goal that the resolution would be by the, that placeholder special meeting of February 25th. And we don't have that written in later in the agenda for upcoming board meetings. Is it safe to schedule now? Is it safe to, to talk about that right now?
I think so. I think we should, actually.
And talking to Lesco today, they did have some concerns about if it went a full two weeks, that that could be somewhat critical in the timing of getting, keeping things on schedule. They hoped that we would be able to meet that goal within, meet within a week possibly.
Okay. Are, are they going to be prepared with comparisons in a week? They've got a week and a day, basically, because the 18th would be a holiday next week. They've got a week and a day, basically, because the 18th would be a holiday next week. So if we were to, it would be a Tuesday, would be the next available date.
I, I think that we're, we're turning to Mr. Rini and Green Space because they're really the ones that are taking data from all over to, we've hired them to be in that position of that control, correct?
Correct.
So, so I think we turn to you to say, is that realistic? A one-week or two-week timeframe for us to schedule a meeting or plan a meeting for those decisions?
I, I certainly think we can put the information together. Again, we have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday with Lesko themselves, and the following Wednesday with, with the engineers. I think we need to speak to both those parties before we can come back to.
I, I think that puts it two weeks away anyhow. If the, if the engineering.
We don't know whether or not.
We wouldn't rush this. Here's what we should do. Let's, let's put together, would the 18th be available to you, which is a Monday, even though it's a holiday? I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's.
Do we not think that's rushing? Hey, look, let's, let's put it down as a date, letting you know that it's available to us. And if it's, you guys, if it's critical, we make it happen, great. If not, then we're available on the 25th as scheduled. So we'll leave it to, you know.
I like that. I like that. In other words, upcoming in the agenda, we will add a special meeting for.
The 18th.
The 18th. And if, in fact, the work isn't done, then we will.
If it's truly that.
Put out a change notice in the proper amount of time to change to the 25th. I like that. We'll pencil that in, I think, when we come to that agenda.
Yeah, we will. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Is there anything on here that you guys want to have hold or any concerns?
I think, Mrs. Hendricks, didn't you?
There's no item E.
Yeah, right, I knew, item E.
I have nothing.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Please call the board.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item 11, upcoming dates. Right now, we've just penciled in, well, first of all, we, we've got February 25th set.
It's not in here.
It's listed, but.
It should be in here. So we've got the 18th of February, the 25th of February, which we, we have scheduled for the board, which may drop off if we have the 18th. I don't want to do a back-to-back weeks of board meetings, so.
Right now, on the, on the official agenda, we just have nothing more in February. At least the one that's in front of me.
I, I'd sent out to everybody earlier.
I understand. I understand. I, I'm in agreement, but it's not official here yet on this one.
Correct. So I'm, I'm throwing it out here as a date that we want to add.
Okay, and we're adding the 18th?
And the 25th.
Okay.
So at this point, it's going to be to the discretion of administration to choose which one of those would be a special meeting for the sake of the construction project. We also looked at March 5th, because March 11th was not available to people?
Yeah, and March 11th is definitely not available for me. And I've known that since January. I keep saying that, and we were waiting till about this time.
And Phil was not available on the 4th. And so the 5th was the date that you felt you could be back in time for, correct?
I can.
Which is a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody I got, sent me back so that March 5th was available. Is that still good for you? Okay, so we're looking at March 5th as the regular board meeting?
Excuse me, so is, it's now March 5th, now March 11th?
That's correct. That'll be the regular board meeting. The 5th of March.
Tuesday.
7:00 PM would be a Tuesday. And then as a special meeting, just to be posted, we had March, excuse me, March 25th.
I'd like to mention that in the consent agenda, we, we, or in the attachments, we have the minutes from the meeting a year ago. And in that meeting a year ago, we had a discussion item to talk about the special board workshop that we did. And when there's a new board member, we put that on. We've been trying to schedule that in with Mr. Habermill as the new board member and with the goal of doing one of those annually. So I don't want to let that fall too far off our radar.
It will happen in March, for sure. So the 25th is what I'd be looking at at this point. You know, that's just before the holiday, but it's, it should be okay. When you get down to April, April 8th is the same night as your community meeting at the high school you just talked about.
I won't be here April 8th, and I won't either.
Okay. So how does April the 15th look? Yeah, that's a tax day.
Yeah.
How about the cramming? April 15th, Mr. Dawson? Good. Get your taxes done. Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and, you know, for the sake of putting it on the calendar, we haven't talked to Chris yet. I've talked to Chris about all the other dates. So, Mr. Habermill, so hopefully we can just go with April the 15th as our regular board meeting and April the 29th as a special meeting if needed. All right. I think that's, well, we've got May 13 listed. Let's just go to May. Is, is that good for everybody?
May 13th is good.
Okay, great. Okay. May 13th. All right, great. And you've got that. You've got this for records?
I have the 18th or the 25th of February for a special. March 5th is the regular, March 25th for the special, and then April 15th, regular, April 29th, special, and then May 13th, regular.
Perfect. Excellent, okay. Anything else on that? Great, thank you for getting us through into May. Okay, recommend resolution to move into executive session for the purpose of purchase of property for public purpose or sale of property to competitive bidding.
I'll move.
One second.
Our time is 9:19. Oh, call the board, please. Dale?
Mr. Jo, Mr. Dawson?
Sorry. Caught up in a moment. I know.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Wanted to get up. Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Motion carries.